All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Norwood Planning Board. We're here at 275 Prospect Street at the Senior Center and the public has the ability to participate remotely via Google Meet. Seven o'clock. We have the first matter before the board, which is approval of the meeting minutes from November 6, 2023. Hope everybody had a chance to look at them. I actually took a peek and wasn't sure if Derek seconded motions. You're in here for having seconded a couple of motions. I'm not sure if it's accurate.
I don't think so.
Yeah. So that's all I saw was that I think there was two instances of Derek having seconded motions. But did anybody else have any thoughts about the minutes?
I think a motion will prove.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for using both sides of the paper.
All opposed? Sorry. All right. So the next matter on the agenda this evening is discussion of the MBTA community's draft bylaw, a status update presentation to the planning board, and an informal discussion of the draft bylaw article. And maybe move into it. There's no announcement. Okay.
You all received a copy, I believe, of my memo from last week, just kind of updating you on the differences between the draft you have before you and the draft that you reviewed two weeks ago. The biggest, most substantial one was the creation of a third sub-district to try to address some of the concerns that I know the task force had and I had as well about including some of the properties that were in the central business district as well, and really trying to create dimensional requirements that make sense for the unique nature of those parcels, being quite a bit different than the properties that line Lennox Street further down toward Central, and certainly Woods and Gardens. So that creation of a third sub-district allows for more, you know, downtown kind of pedestrian, accessible businesses, you know, closer to the sidewalk, that sort of thing. There were a couple of other, you know, adjustments that were made to uses and parking, and a couple of tweaks to things like open space, mostly in response to feasibility. I spent some time sitting down with landowners and really kind of going through our GIS system and taking samplings of parcels from each of these sub-districts to say, okay, you know, these dimensional requirements look good on paper, but what does that actually create as far as a building envelope? Like, where could you actually put a building here and what's, you know, reasonable for the property? I want to avoid putting together a bylaw, again, that looks good on paper but isn't actually accessible or practical when it comes to producing reinvestment and redevelopment on parcels that we think may be appropriate for that. So some of the adjustments were related to that. I know I've talked to a couple of you individually in the last couple of weeks and answered some questions. I know some of you have some concerns that absolutely we should kind of really get into and figure out which direction we want to head in. But with my recommendation to you, Mr. Chair, is to perhaps start with clarifying questions, you know, if there are things about this that maybe board members don't understand or that don't think read as clearly to them as they could potentially, maybe we can go through that first and then move into it.
Sure. Just with that, Joe, do you have a comment?
Just quickly, on the maps here, maybe one of them is older, doesn't show the difference. I know that you've got Norwood Depot sub-district, and it seems to go across Manhattan into Lennox Street there. And I think it still shows on the other map I have. I think they're, they overlap. So where is the line of demarcation?
The line would be at Avalon. So the Avalon property would be the last property in Norwood Central.
Okay. And then Regal Press would be in the...
That would also be in Norwood Central.
No, it's Central. So Avalon is the cutoff.
Avalon's the cutoff. That's the last one in Norwood Central Sub-District as it stands now.
Just looking at the Lennox Street, the parcel number one, it's on the side of Manhattan Street, the opposite side from the rest of Depot. And I was just curious, it just seems like it should go with the other, but I guess it depends on...
I'm sorry, which, number one?
Number one, the parcel one.
Lennox Plaza.
Lennox Plaza.
Well, I guess the question is why we included that in the Depot versus the Central?
It is in the central business district, is the short answer.
Yeah. So shouldn't it be?
So it's in the Depot. So Norwood Depot is closer to the central business district. Norwood Depot has the properties that the base zoning is central business.
Okay.
No, I think we're talking central train station versus Depot train station.
Correct. So Norwood Depot is on Railroad Ave.
Right. And Lennox, I think, Joe, what you're saying is Lennox Plaza is in the Norwood Depot subdivision.
Yeah.
It is.
And I think his question is, why is it there and not in Norwood Central?
Because everything in the Norwood Depot sub-district is in the central business district. The underlying zoning is central business.
The underlying zone, okay. I think we're getting the Centrals.
That's the line, yeah. That's the line in the sand.
We're getting...
Central business district, underlying zoning, you've got zero foot side and front setbacks, right? You've got businesses that come right up to the sidewalk so that when a pedestrian's walking through, they can look in a window and see what they want to purchase or see what business they want to stop in.
I think that's the confusion.
That's your zoning and your downtown area.
Central business versus central, central train station.
Correct. Yeah. Norwood Central as the sub-district is not downtown. Like, that's not our, our central business district zoning. It's currently manufacturing zoning, most of that right now.
Behind the house, though.
Yes.
I always get those confused.
Yeah. So that's, that's the difference. It's really the underlying zoning that put them in each bucket, so to speak, because the dimensional requirements for the existing neighborhoods are quite different. So the kind of development you might want to see as a result of that is probably going to be quite different as well. So the sub-districts try to accommodate that.
When we show this on a map, we may want to show the underlying district.
Agreed.
So people can see why, because that's the big question. Why is this in this? And if we show the underlying district, that'll clear it up.
I mean, the half-mile radius, there's such a heavy overlap between these two stations that, you know, if you wanted it all to have the same dimensional requirement, you could put them all in the same sub-district. But if you're, you know, a human walking around, you'll see that block by block, the neighborhood character, the field changes quite a bit. And so dividing them is a way for us to try to respect the existing development pattern, if that makes sense.
Yeah. So I guess on the central station, we just have to, on this map, we would just have to eliminate some. Okay. So we don't have them in two different places. The other thing, I guess, was the density and where we're going with that. And I was curious, I don't know, we were talking a little earlier, just trying to, I don't know if you, the Lennox proposal that came before is before, that didn't pass, it didn't, they pulled out of town meeting. Do we know what the density was there per, per unit, per acre, unit per acre?
I know what a ballpark of that figure was, but I can't, I don't want to be incorrect. I believe it was somewhere around 60 units an acre. Jacob, I don't know if you want to answer that question, the owner of that property.
Oh, he's here.
It was about, it was 55 was the last proposal.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry to put you on the spot there.
And that's in Central?
That would be in the Norwood Central Sub-District, yeah.
What is the density down there now? What is this proposed?
It would be right around 50. But that changes. So the state, well, it doesn't. So we could, we could have all these dimensional requirements and set a maximum density of, you know, 20 units an acre, and you wouldn't be able to construct anything that even approaches, you know, these dimensional requirements. What I've tried to do is leave the density box blank and plug in the figures for the building height and the setbacks and the amount of open space that we want and the amount of parking we want to require, and kind of see what that number is based on all of the other stuff. And so the density figure of about 50 units an acre is, is with all of those things included. So I'm trying to encourage you guys to think of density as sort of like a moving target.
This is similar to what we did on Route One.
Changes depending on what your, your other requirements are.
Can I correct, Sarah? Similar to what we did on Route One.
Yeah.
Instead of doing a density number, we let you build the building and let the density fall where it may.
So we still have to assign a density
Right.
limit to our zoning to come into compliance with the state. The state requires that. But I'm trying to take that appro, I've been trying to take that approach with kind of seeing what density number we get to once we design the building. So kind of approaching it from that angle.
But we don't get to design the building. The developer does.
Correct. But we can set standards for...
You set, you set the height, you set the setbacks, you set the, all the requirements that they have to abide by.
We can set where it wants to be. We want it to be on the lot. We could include step-back requirements where we say it can be this tall, this far away from the sidewalk, and then taller, closer to the train tracks.
Do we have any sand design?
There are some general design requirements in here.
Avalon's working great in Cambridge. You know, there's nothing but Avalon developments in Cambridge all around, too, everywhere. Works great in the city. I don't necessarily think it works so well with our mix, but I...
We can set some, we can set design standards, but they have to be
Reasonable.
Reasonable.
And can we, you can't do it by piece of property, right? You have to do it in the whole strip.
For the zoning, yes. But don't forget that you also do have site plan review for everything that is proposed under this. Everything will come before you for site
But you can give, you know, this one's got a little more, because I am glad you went out and looked at the properties, because every one of them is different. So you get that piece of dirt, this building will work on that one, and three blocks away, it's not going to work because the, you know, we've got all these odd-shaped lots and configurations and no frontage and so, but are we going to be allowed to say, well, that worked here and you're only three lots away, but you don't have enough frontage side height? Because Lennox Street goes like this.
There is the ability in here. There's a section on waivers that grants the planning board the ability to issue waivers of these dimensional requirements. If it's in the interest of design flexibility and overall project quality and upon defining of consistency, that that variation is still within the overall purpose and intention of the bylaw.
What are you reading?
So you do have the ability to grant some waivers on a case-by-case basis in the site plan review process, the same way you do now with parking. You know, you guys have the ability to grant parking requirements in site plan review, and very often you exercise that, because when you're looking at it...
Parking requirements are really low, right? Because they're in the train station footprint.
Here they are, yeah. But elsewhere in town, our parking requirements, you usually find they're really high. So that's how that waiver would function very similarly to that.
Well, you know, Regal, which I think is a great project, I went by there tonight. Every parking spot in the front and in the back is full. And then there, and those are, aren't those studios and one-bedrooms? And they're parked in the, you know, aisles, only two cars, but somebody came over to visit, obviously no place to park. So I get that we're doing MBTA and people are going to walk this train, but there are going to be cars. There's just going to be cars. So are we going to be allowed to let them do underground?
So structured parking is available here.
Parking lots?
Mm-hmm. Parking garages, podium parking.
Okay. They can go underground, which is cost prohibitive.
They want to do it and they can find a way to propose it. We're certainly not stopping anymore.
And are we going to have garage design rules?
We can. We don't have any in there now, but if you'd like to establish some, we certainly could do that.
I would love to establish some. Anybody have any feeling on that? Some?
Just, you know, we're not voting on this tonight.
No, no.
This is just discussion. We're throwing stuff out, spitball. Okay.
I mean, I, we're not the only ones having the parking problem, the apartment problem. You know, there's, there's more of us in this little pile of dirt around Boston. Everybody's having the same problem. They're getting more density, but we're not getting less cars. So I think even though, you shouldn't have to have, what is it, three cars? No, four cars for a three-bedroom? I don't, I think we have to make way for someplace to put cars, maybe visiting cars or, to say that because it's around the MBTA station, there won't be any parking issues, I don't agree. I'm willing to let them go under, go garages, but I would like some kind of rule so we're not having just big...
So what we have in, in here now
What number?
Parking structure, sorry, I should have put page numbers on this.
What are the numbers?
G4. Parking design?
I lost my whole thing. I must have left it there.
So buildings dedicated to structured parking shall be subordinate in design and placement. Architectural design features such as non-reflective windows, variegated materials, and I listed out stamped concrete and brick, because I know that was something you had expressed interest in when we permitted the hospital garage. Landscaping and screening and decorative facade openings are strongly encouraged. You could certainly expand that, but that's kind of just the basic weather plate that I included here.
Debbie, just on Lennox Street, they do have parking across the street, just to, you know.
Not all of Lennox Street.
At Regal?
From, all right.
Oh, Regal.
From Regal.
Yeah, Regal.
Where is it across the street? I thought that was the...
No, he's got some, he's got some spaces.
Oh, they can park in the guy's lot across the street. That's right.
That's true.
Yeah, okay. Behind another sign.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they can park in the MBTA. I, I understand all that. I'm not, you know, I'm not mixing it. I'm trying, I think, I think it, I think it's short-sighted of us just to say, well, because it's around the MBTA and people, they're assuming people aren't going to have cars. I don't think that's true. Now, we all live in neighborhoods where the kids grow up and now they're 16 and they've got a car that you can't get out of your driveway because it's three kids and two parents and you can't, it's just the way of the world. And you don't live out in Norwood because you don't have a car. Boston, okay. Parts of West Roxbury, not Norwood. People are going to come visit you, they're going to have cars. I think it is to our, I think we need to be a little forward-thinking in saying, we've got to have someplace for them to put these cars. That's the issue downtown Norwood. Whether it's the bank or the density they don't like, they've got to have someplace to put cars. So, okay. I'm done selling that one.
Sorry, you...
No, I was just, I was, I'm thinking. So part of the way that I got to those figures was by talking to developers and also reaching out to existing developments and asking about parking amounts in, in practice. But I'm wondering how I can maybe get some of that in a memo or something to kind of show you, maybe make you feel more comfortable with them, or if there's more, like, we're not going to commission a traffic study because that would be too expensive, but if there's any sort of data or documentation that might help us fine-tune those figures to a point that you're comfortable with?
And if we're more specific, we can always, as a board, give them a waiver.
You can, in either direction, you know, above or below.
But it's, it feels better, having sat here for this many years, to be able to say, here's what we're asking for. Well, I can't do this, I can't, okay. Then we'll give you a waiver from that, instead of saying, well, now I want you to do plant screening, whatever. And it's, well, it's not in the paper. I, I get why they get pissy about that, okay? But I think it would be better for us as a board, whether it's us or anybody else, to have a whole lot of stuff that you can say, all right, different piece of dirt, you don't have to do that one, instead of saying, well, now I want you to do this one. I think it makes it better for us down the road to look like we're trying to work with you, not like we're trying to break you.
Yeah, I don't disagree. Parking is a funny one, too, because I think it used to be, and our bylaws, current bylaws reflect this, you know, the more parking, the better. And now we have a motivation not to do that, because if you just have vacant, unused parking spaces, then it's just asphalt, you know, this impervious surface that does nobody any good. It could be green space. So you don't want to require too much or too little. You want to try to hit the sweet spot, and it's finding what that sweet spot is that, you know, is the challenge.
Commercial and residential are different animals, though.
Right.
I mean, it's, it's just a different, it's a different animal. And...
Let me see what, what numbers I can come up with, any data that I can put together that maybe would help us
And in the...
Fine-tune this.
My package shit disappeared from here to the car. But in the draft, is it, the developer will decide whether, what the, the breakdown between bedrooms is? They can have as many threes, ones, twos, whatever. Okay.
I believe there was no restriction on that. That was part of the state law. There was no restriction.
I, I thought they did have to have some three bedrooms. They have to have a certain...
You cannot, you cannot tell them they can't have...
And then no percentages? So if they want the whole building to be threes?
I think in this, in the 3A, they have that opportunity.
Okay. Then, then I think it's more important to make some guidelines for parking.
Agree.
Thank you. Derek, that's why you put me next to Derek.
You did note that they want to make sure you have three bedrooms, but they did not put a minimum or anything? They did not?
No, they said you can't restrict it. You say you can't, we want all one-bedrooms. You can't do that.
Okay.
Did you... Yeah, we can't, I mean, we'll figure, we'll figure on talking about parking. But I was just going to add to Debbie's comments that I have heard from some younger couples that say they have two cars and they, they don't take the train, you know, and they both have jobs and they're both using their cars. I have heard that they're having to pay for an extra unit just to get a parking space, just to get an extra. I don't know if that's a particular
Around here?
Wallpole. I don't know if, I don't know how the numbers work, but it's at some point that had been mentioned a couple of times.
I'll look at those, because you're right. There's a bunch of new complexes right near the train station on Wallpole. I haven't reached out to those yet to see kind of what their, their numbers are. That would be interesting to find out.
Yeah, I don't know.
So they pay for an extra parking spot?
Well, no, they, they pay for a three-bedroom instead of a two, so they can have two parking spots versus one.
Wow, okay.
I mean, it is, it's everywhere. It's in, it's in Norwood and two families where there's not enough, we have to be off the streets now, and there's two families where there's, they can't get off the street. They got to go rent a spot. Yeah, but it's a two-family, two people. And we, I do think we need to take into consideration, the shutdown is over, but a lot of people don't want to go back to work. Wasn't that brought up at town meeting? Or, or don't have to go back to work. So now they're home with a car, somebody comes to visit. I mean, I think we need to really think about the car thing. Garages underneath. Do you know if we could find out from anybody what the difference in construction is from going underground as opposed to above ground?
I bet it would be expensive.
Yeah, especially if there's contamination.
Yeah. And not only that, but just now you're, now you're drilling down to, yeah, you're going down a lot farther to hit bedrock. I bet it's expensive.
Not impossible.
But not impossible.
So the family housing in Islington Center in Westwood has underground parking?
It does? It was $37, $1,000 for ten. But what about the hospital parking lot? They're going to have to slam those I-beams down to put up a three-story garage, four-story garage? That's expensive.
I mean, it's not unusual, Debbie. It's, I mean, we, we get your point. It's, I kind of agree with you. It's always easier to say, to say, we'll knock it down. It's hard to ask up.
So who would we ask what the approximate square footage to square footage to going below grade as opposed to a...
I don't think, I don't think we even need to talk about that.
No, I know. I just wonder...
I think that is a developer's question.
I, I understand that.
If they want to do it or not. That's, that's up to them. Let them figure out what it's going to cost them.
But is it a ridiculous ask? I mean...
No, I mean, you, no, it's not a ridiculous ask. I mean, you, you put it in the bylaw that it's allowed. And if some developer says, you know, my, the grade on my property, you know, allows that and it's, it makes it for easy for underground parking, then he could do it.
You'd probably want more information about the cost if you were requiring it.
Yeah.
Right? Because that would inform all of your other...
Right. If you make it an option.
If somebody does something they really cannot afford to do and...
Like, it's helpful to know what exactly it is you're asking or making people do.
I mean, I'll give you a perfect example. When, when Davis Group was going to build at the, put those apartments of 40B way back when at...
What, Poleride?
Poleride, with the, the land going up the hill before the town bought it. They had townhouses, and because of the slope of the land, they could park underneath and, and put the townhouse above it because of the contour of the land. And they could do that very easily. Other places, you...
Oh, we didn't allow it? Or that was a 40B?
No, that was the 40B. That was, I mean, but that's how, the, the plan was, that's what they were going to do. So, I mean, it's, it's, you can, you make it an option and let the developer decide if they want to do it or not. That's not on us, it's on them.
I'll, I'll interject, though. I suspect you're going, you're thinking about the underground parking, because if you're not parking underground, then the trade-off of requiring more parking is less building space or less open space.
Right.
There is tension.
Right. You put a garage up, you lose 50, $100,000 square feet of building. And if you're looking at So-Brenner, whatever you call it, TSP factory there, he's rate of, you know, he puts a parking garage up, he loses half the building.
Yeah, that's not a problem.
But, but I really, I know I belabor.
The flip side of that, though, is not allowing the garage, and then you've got twice as much surface area covered for the same number of spaces. So in that sense, the garage is a more efficient way of putting the parking on the lot.
Yeah, going under the buildings. So let's say, let's say that, what's the height? Five stories?
Debbie, what if we just say we allow it?
Okay.
And, and I believe that's in the bylaw, that we allow it.
Okay, all right.
And we don't need to, and then...
Belaborate. Okay. What about, is the garage space that's the first floor, is that included in the height of the building, total height of the building?
Yeah.
Yeah. Height of the building is height of the building.
Well...
Not from, not from, not from the first, not from the first level floor, from the ground.
Okay. I'm just, it was a rhetorical question.
It's measured from the ground outside.
Right.
So it's not measured, like, it's not measured from the bottom of the basement up.
From the ground level.
Right, ground level.
Right.
So would anybody, would something like, they could get another floor if they did first floor under garages?
If it's, if it's half underground and the other half is, is above ground, and then occupy spaces up there.
So you're thinking a building height bonus for underground.
Underground. Or like, I think, first level, like, Norwood Crossing.
What's the difference? Like Norwood Crossing, like Space Center.
Yeah.
That they, they, I think that would be something I could get my head around. I'll give you more height so you can have more, you know...
But you're going to need more parking if you have more people.
No, I'm not going to give them more units.
Same amount, just going up.
Same amount, they can just go higher.
Just giving them, giving them, giving them the extra height so they can put the parking underneath.
That's right. There wouldn't, there wouldn't be, there would be more, if he has an extra...
If you give him a bonus.
If you give them a bonus floor, that's a whole other floor of new units. That's more parking space.
Well, I don't, I think, I don't think she's saying a bonus. Let me just, you're saying that you would waive the height.
We think so.
You would waive the height requirement and let them go up. You would waive the height requirement and let them go up another eleven feet if they put the cars. Not more units, just they would waive the height requirement. And say, instead of going forty feet, we'll let you go fifty, but that extra ten feet is your first floor parking.
Correct. See, Ernie?
Yeah, yeah.
We are, we are.
You just gotta figure.
Hook up a gas here.
You gotta, I mean, it's something to think about. That's not a bad, so, still, we'll take a note of that, and it's not a bad idea.
I mean, I think the more we encourage them to put in some kind of parking, even though it's MBTA, nobody's gonna have a car. It's not true.
I agree. That's a good idea, so we'll, we'll kick that around.
Okay, so that would just be.
Are you looking at me, you want more? I can go on for days here.
No, I'm just seeing. So, um, with regard to, let's see what we got. Alright, so, on the same topic, are we moving through these?
This is the one.
Yeah, I don't know what I'm looking at. What?
This, you're looking for the bylaw?
No, no, yeah, the bylaw, so. We just banged around parking for quite, quite a period of time. Sarah, what's the next item at this, in the, in these bullet points?
Are there other areas that weren't clear? Ernie has one.
More than one, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Sarah.
Yeah, no, don't be, this is, this is, this is helpful, like, this is what we need to be doing.
And, um.
Is going through.
I'm glad we have Rachel here, she's on the task force, I'm glad. And, and a lot of these concerns, I have, I'm not disagreeing with them. I'm just, I, I sometimes need to be explained to. I do have some concerns that I'll bring here, we can discuss and bring it back to the task force as well, because, first one, and, and I, and I think that, it's not that I disagree with it, but I think that we are gonna have to explain it. And I think at town meeting, the task force slash planning board, once we bring this to town meeting and we go through public comment sections on this, are gonna have to be united and have to explain why we're doing a certain thing and what's the reason. So the first one is the actual creation of the third district. And what we've done is the state requires fifty acres. And the three districts now show seventy-nine acres. So the question is going to come up, if the state says fifty acres, why are we at seventy-nine? Why are we more than adding fifty percent more land when we don't need to? And these are questions that are gonna have to be answered. I understand, I'm not saying I disagree with it, but I think the, the answer would be that we look at these other properties, I think Holly brought this up today, and we show pictures of them, and we explain to people why this particular property, even though we're exceeding fifty acres, makes sense.
Would you explain it to me?
Because, be, due to the nature of the current properties that are there. Uh, like, for example, I'll give you one, the Norwood Tire, um, piece of property.
Yep.
Which is, and there's a bank, it used to be Rockland Trust, I don't know, it's a thousand different things, whatever it is now.
There's a DPW lot.
Okay, and that would, has been added to the district. That makes perfect sense, because you're, you're, one, you're the main, you're not encroaching on any residential areas. You have a train, uh, in your backyard. Across the street, you have two apartment complexes. To your left, you have another apartment complex, and on the other side of the train track, there is a apartment complex. It makes perfect sense to include that parcel in, in.
Is that number seven?
If.
It's one, four, two, or three?
If you're on, um.
Yeah.
No, fourteen.
If you're on the Norwood Depot sub-district page.
Yeah.
You're in the Hatton Street, you're right number two and number three.
Oh, okay.
Right on the corner?
Yeah, oh, is this the train? Okay, alright.
Number three is the bank, number two is Norwood Tire.
There's no single-family residence.
There's nothing there, that makes.
There's a couple, two families, and then there's apartments and commercial.
Apartments, commercial, and more apartments.
So number four is DPW?
Yeah, either number four or number six, I'm not sure.
None of the two families, though, is important to note. None of the two families are on that side of the street.
They're on the other side.
On the other side of the street.
And then, so I mean, that makes, so there's an example where that makes perfect sense.
So we can pick out a lot? It doesn't have to be a strip, it can be plucked?
No, you cannot, say, for example, Debbie, you didn't want to include lot four. No, I, you can't, they have to be continuous, or basically continuous.
But lots four or six is DPW?
No, the other four.
Right, you can include that. I mean, nothing's gonna happen there, the DPW is, you can include that in your, in your count, just like the old parish cemetery is included, correct?
Yeah, but that was actually a mistake.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
I didn't intend to include the cemetery in there.
Well, you know, Harold, you're the reason.
I'm sorry, Patty.
Oh, my gosh, sure he does.
Dr. Fanning is listening, I'm sorry.
Yeah, somewhere in town, Patty's having a heart attack.
So, so that's number one, and that, that's something that we'll have, we'll discuss, and I think the task force will discuss.
Okay, could, could you just help me? Because I'm gonna be one of the people saying, well, if we only have to do fifty, why didn't you do seventy-nine? So tell me.
Because of the, the nature of the lots that we're looking at.
Do you want me to share this?
If, and, and I'm gonna ask them, Holly and Sarah to jump in, because the, the nature of the lots are ripe for this kind of development. And if we don't include them in this, they probably will never be redeveloped under the current zoning. Because of the current zoning restricts this type of improvement, right?
I understand that.
Am I correct in that?
This was the one we added, incorrect?
No, that's one's a god.
I'm sorry, um, Norwood Depot subdivision, we added.
Right.
What did the two original ones come to in?
I'm gonna just do a screen share.
It was about fifty-five acres.
The properties we're talking about.
So we had, we had covered our behinds with what the state wants with these two. And we did this one because we think that it's a good idea and.
And there's also, Sarah, when she did this bylaw, in each subdivision, there are different requirements for setbacks and things like that. So they're not all the same. So your setback in the Depot District is different than Norwood Central District, and different than Windsor Gardens. And if you go through the bylaw, you see in the dimensional pages, they're broken into the three divisions, and each one has its own set of dimensional requirements. So correct me if I'm wrong, Sarah, on that line of thinking, that if these were not included in this, chances of them getting any kind of redevelopment, meaningful redevelopment, I mean, yes, you could put up another meatball factory, but that's probably not gonna happen. Would not happen, these pieces of property.
Norwood Central, yeah, for sure.
These probably would not happen, and, and you have what you have.
Okay, so at number one and three, isn't that Norwood Housing?
Mm-hmm.
It is.
It is.
So, okay, just, just to back that up. So in creating the zones, keeping them continuous made sense, right? You wouldn't want to skip over Norwood Tire, include, right, the, the bank, and then have a blank space, and then, right? So you want to have them contiguous, contiguous. I, I don't see harm in including properties like Avalon, even though we know that, when we create this bylaw, is Avalon gonna knock down everything that's there and reconstruct? Like, there's no motivation or incentive to do that. So a lot of these acres were recently developed multifamily housing, right? So to the extent that you could say, well, why do we include them? Why go over the fifty acres? Why not? It gets us closer to meeting our standard for the density requirement, right? If you only do fifty acres, and we have to allow for a potential, you know, building count of two thousand, that means the density that we zone for those fifty acres has to be a lot higher. If we have a larger spread of acreage, we can have more modest, you know, ranges of density to get us to that unit count figure.
Can we cherry pick?
If we can in a way that makes sense on paper. It can't be spots here and there. So the districts have to be, you can have sub-districts, but one has to be greater than fifty percent, which this does.
Over fifty acres.
The, the smallest can't be less than five acres. So that's why I included the stuff for Norwood Depot up to the housing authority properties, and including the large Lennox condominium apartment building right there, um, on Railroad, because it's developed, it's not at risk for redevelopment under these. But it gives us the, you know, the, the land area that we need to have a justifiable sub-district that exceeds five acres, which is the minimum size a sub-district could have.
Okay, but you've already got the, number one, corner Lennox and Railroad, is that one with all the stone? And like you said.
Corner of Lennox and Railroad.
They're not gonna knock it down, it's, isn't it condominium?
Yeah.
So they're not gonna knock it down. So it's, am I missing something?
I need five acres in a sub-district. So I had to add enough property to equal five acres. This is, is only about five acres. This is about as small a sub-district as you could have.
Is five acres?
Yeah.
But it, there's only a few things that are developable.
True.
Yeah.
True.
Am I missing something? No.
I mean, it's all developable, but is the town gonna sell Norwood Housing Authority? No.
Isn't this the MBTA lot?
But, but if they did, it's, it's.
Is this the train station?
Fourteen is the lot.
Yeah, and number, number two, up there, the new one, that's the.
That's the cemetery.
That's the cemetery.
Alright.
And Dempsey's.
Without the cemetery, we're probably just about five. Without the cemetery, we're probably just about five acres.
This is the Norwood Depot parking lot.
So that's, that's number one. Let's, is the, I think we've killed that.
Does it make sense?
It does.
It's complicated.
So to get the five acres, you would need that Lennox Street development on the other side of Manhattan?
Yeah.
Yes.
Now, it doesn't have to be that building, right? And this is where we can have the parcel, like, our parcel conversation. If you think one parcel's inappropriate, but you still want to preserve a Norwood Depot sub-district, then maybe we add something else in.
What is, well, this is the cemetery.
That's the cemetery.
So this is the Shamrock.
Yeah, that's Soco's.
This, this is Dempsey's.
Yeah.
This is the, there's a little hairdresser in here, there's the new kennel back here. There's, not Soco's is over here.
No, Soco's is over here, so what's the?
No, no, this is not, this is, this is Railroad, so the Shamrock is number six.
Yep.
Alright, four A is the, the Shamrock housing building.
Oh, okay.
Number, this one is, there's a hairdresser, this one is the, there's a new kennel back there.
Yep.
This is the old social security office over here.
Oh, yeah, I was mixing.
So, Sarah, with, with the cemetery taking, taken out, are we still at five acres?
It would be right at about five acres, yeah.
Okay.
This was a little bit over.
I'm, again, I'm not being critical, I'm just asking questions.
No, this is.
So if you give, sounds logical, this is just, if you give this a district, but, um, number one, the building with the pretty stone on it is ten years old. They're condos, okay? You've taken out Norwood Housing across the street. I don't know what that total comes up to for square footage. You take out the DPW, maybe you're down to.
No, that, so there's two different things that you're comparing here. One is the total number of acres, which we need to be able to provide to come into compliance, come up with like a, okay. And then there's the, like, the softer, but what actually happens once we put this zoning into place? What will end up getting developed? What will future development be? What will actually happen, right? And that's not a compliance issue, but it's an important one where we think about, like, what do we want this area to look like? And what you're saying correctly is nothing is going to happen on the housing authority property or on that parcel one where the town has, and you're not wrong, like, nothing will happen. But that's kind of the point why I included it, is.
Okay, but is, did that, like, feel like?
To fill out a five-acre parcel that includes the, the parcels that we do want to see reinvestment in, and nothing more.
Okay, so I'm, I'm, let's say I'm with the state, and I say, kinda like, now you're trying to get around the forty B by including whatever, whatever. You gave us, you gave us five zones, but half of the zone isn't.
They don't, they don't look at what's on the ground.
God forbid we should look at what's on the ground.
Hmm, so. It's not a production mandate.
It's not a production.
They're asking us to put together zoning. They're not asking us to say, in ten years, you need to produce this many.
You've got another fifty.
They're not asking us to do in ten years?
They're not asking us to do that, no.
You've got another seventy acres, Deb, of.
Seventy?
Well, it's total seventy-nine acres. I mean, realistically, Sarah's absolutely right. She has to come up with five acres. All five acres don't have to be prime, but there are some spots, the Norwood Tire area being one, that is prime for redevelopment.
Okay, I'm, I'm, this is.
I mean, Lennox Plaza.
I gotta be able to sell this to be able to get, I, I can't, I can't be at the grocery store and go, I don't know, that makes sense, I can't, I can't.
Well, the, the answer, what's gonna happen is, and we'll fight this task force, we'll discuss it, not fight it, I mean, discuss it, we'll discuss it here. Someone will ask the question, and I'm not, and I'm just being devil's advocate, will say, well, if the, you know, they're not gonna, we're not gonna knock down Norwood Housing, take it out. Just take it out. Well, the answer is that we need the five to, to create a five-acre district. In order to get Norwood Tire and a few other spots to be able to redevelop, we need a five-acre parcel. The fact that Norwood Housing is never gonna tear it down, irregardless, it's in the, it's, it's, it's part of the, part of the.
I mean, the place that we started in with this was not to create a district, so that all of these parcels that we don't actively want to solicit and encourage redevelopment on were not included, and the parcels that we were trying to encourage that kind of activity were rolled into the other district. But that was problematic, because the dimensional requirements of these two different areas feel like they need different things, so that was the motivation for creating this new sub-district.
Remember, we're, we're not asking anybody to knock anything down and rebuild.
No, no, I, I get, I get all that, I'm just, I'm saying, what this, I mean, I've watched forty B and Section Eight and forty A for thirty years.
Forty B.
It is, we've taken the hit, and the other towns managed to get around it for all of those reasons. I don't want that to be.
What you say in front of you is compliant.
Okay.
We haven't gotten the, the rule from, but when I look through the compliance worksheet, everything checks off. So there's nothing about this that I anticipate getting, you know, disapproved by the state. It's a matter of whether or not this works for us.
Right.
If, what kind of redevelopment does this allow? And is it creating higher and better uses for the parcels that right now are not serving the community to the best of their ability? That, that's really what we're trying to get at with this. And in some areas, yeah, that means we're going above the minimum standards. But, you know, frankly, the task force started with a really honest conversation about that, that where Norwood is in our market compared to the state, if we put together a bylaw that was just the, all the very basic minimums, that we could, we could pass, right? Like, we could get through the state's checkpoint on compliance, but it wouldn't do anything. It wouldn't change anything.
No one would build.
Nobody would build anything. And, and if we had started our community engagement process, and that was overwhelmingly the only response we got, like, maybe that's the direction we would have gone in. But that's not, that's not what we heard in our, in our survey, in our sessions, you know, where we talked with people, people talk about there's a need for housing, and different kinds of housing, and more accessible housing, and more affordable housing. And, you know, there's questions and concerns about where it should go, and what it should look like, and is it gonna change our neighborhoods, and what are the impacts on traffic? And all these very reasonable concerns. But the answer, I feel like, that we got through all of that was not to do nothing. And so these standards, yep, they're a little bit higher than what the state is asking, that minimum.
Can I just ask the task force? I've asked this, I know I'm a broken record.
Okay.
The more we put in, the more specific we are, the less ambiguous we are with our rules, we can, we can give them a, a waiver, a very, whatever. Let's, I'm not saying be punitive, I'm just saying let's be as specific as we can to, you know, down to nitpicky, 'cause it, these, in, in, in the real world, these books are just too ambiguous. Everybody plays fast and loose with whatever. You know, I can't get this, I can't do a sidewalk because it's, whatever. Let's ask for, let's be as specific as we can, ask for the best product that we can give, not being punitive, we can give them a variance. We can say, okay, that makes sense. You don't put a sidewalk, your setback's ten feet instead of fifteen feet. You know, the green space, we could think outside of the box, we could put green space on top of these buildings.
I'll get to that in a minute.
Greenspace on the top? Okay.
I guess, what's that?
I'm good with greenspace on the roof.
I don't think anybody, I certainly don't disagree with you. I feel like now we're at the time where we want the details. So if you have more details and ideas for details, like, now's the time to, to say, these are the details I want and I will happily incorporate them.
It's in your bylaw.
It, well, I, I'm using Derek's 'cause I've lost time from-
So I'm gonna move on here. So we talked about the three districts, we talked about the seventy-nine acres.
More design requirements too, is that something that you were hoping for?
So the, my next thing is, on the, the second bullet point says, drive-throughs are available by special permit as an accessory use. And then as I, and this is just, I need clarification from you two. As I go through the bylaw, drive-throughs come up about three or four times. I'm trying to think under the uses. Okay, pharmacy, this is under mixed-use development, ground floor, under uses, permitted uses. Pharmacy without a drive-through. Restaurant, cafe, other eating establishments without a drive-through. So I, I guess I just need clarification, is-
Those are by right uses?
Those are by right. So if they want a drive-through, it's still a special permit? Okay, so that's, so the wording is fine, right? Is, is, okay, I just, I was confused on that. All right, moving, moving along here.
Question. May I?
Yeah.
Um, so we don't, do we, do we have a specific square footage for what these retail spaces? No. So are we gonna get back to it's a coffee shop on Lennox? Are we gonna get back there?
There is a requirement for mixed use, that it has to be twenty-five percent of the total floor area, right? But other than that, no. Per unit or, you know, per business, there's no requirement. And it's a wide variety of uses that are mixed uses that are allowed in our existing mixed use overlay.
It's a wide variety of what they get to use, I agree, and however-
Mixed use is not required either, is that right? So you're gonna remember, mixed use is not required. This is not a mixed use overlay.
Okay, all right, all right.
It's an option that they can do it, but it's, this is a production, a housing production plan.
Okay.
I just have a question, the twenty-five percent, could you go through that?
So there's gross floor area, it's, in the bonuses, so number six is the bonuses, and there's C in the central business district, that if someone does at least twenty-five percent of the gross floor area as commercial, that they could gain an additional story of height by a special permit.
Right, but since it's an optional use anywhere else, there, that's right, there was no parameter about whether or not-
So you could have all residential and five hundred feet of class?
If you wanted to. Five hundred feet? For five hundred feet, they're getting another height?
No. For twenty-five percent of the gross floor area, there would be a bonus. But otherwise, you could have any amount of commercial down to zero.
Yeah, and if you're comfortable with the Norwood Depot sub-district, we would probably amend the language in that bonus, just to say it's a bonus only available in the Norwood Depot sub-district.
Okay, so moving along, special permit, uses by special permit. The, and again, I just need explanations on this accessory parking of one other vehicle. It's under two B. Accessory parking of one, of one other vehicle, which neither exceeds twelve thousand pounds or gross, not exceed. So can you explain to me, and then it goes on here, the next line, which is C, accessory parking of larger or additional commercial vehicles by special permit. Accessory parking of accessory trailer. Going, I'm confused on-
Yeah.
What we're special permitting.
So you're familiar with our table of uses?
Yes.
We have to come up with an answer for every single one of those uses, even if, like, an accessory trailer on one of these lots, like, doesn't really even make sense, we still have to answer for it. So that's why they're in here somewhere, because we have to say yes, no, by special permit from the ZBA, special permit from the planning board. So the ones that seemed like they could potentially have some sort of an impact on neighbors, which is usually things like parking a truck or a trailer or a dumpster or something like that, our special permit uses.
So this would be, let me, let me throw this as an example, you tell me if I'm wrong. We permit someone to redevelop, build a building. One of his tenants has a fifth-wheeler summer trailer that they park down the canal in the summer, but they gotta bring it back-
And five years from now, they call Gary in the building department and say, my neighbor, how's this trailer?
Right, and they want, and they wanna park it-
Right.
-in that lot. Wouldn't it be up to the landlord to determine if he wanted to allow it or not? Or is that-
If you feel like the town doesn't have a vested interest in that, then you would make it by right and just leave it to the landlord.
Okay.
But-
Right.
All throughout town, it's-
Well, I understand, I understand, and, and, I totally, and again, I just need clarification. I'm not saying right or wrong, I just need, I understand in residential neighborhoods, people don't like to have a boat, you know, parked between the two houses or a trailer. You know, you drive by and some guy's got a forty-foot trailer parked there that he parks for the winter and has to pull it out in the summer. In a development like this, so if someone, if someone, I'm renting a apartment at such and such as, you know, Lennox Street, and I got a summer trailer, or I have a, a trailer I pull because I'm a landscaper, or, or I'm a plumber and you're allowed one vehicle, you know, you're allowed one business vehicle or whatever, that's gonna, you have to get a special permit from the town to park it on that person's private property.
In addition to permission, I suppose, from your landlord.
That would include like snowmobile trailers and boats and things like that?
Yeah. So I don't, I don't know, if I'm confused-
Like storage.
Yeah.
I ju, I just don't know if the-
Yeah.
I don't know if, and I'm sure it is, 'cause I know you women have, know what you're talking about here. If, if the language is, is clear on that or how, because I was very confused on that. On, I understand in residential neighborhoods, but I, I'm thinking, well, you know, if a guy's renting an apartment, he's got a snowmobile trailer and he parks it there, and the landlord says it's okay, and he's got the extra parking, but-
You guys do get to write the rules here.
Okay.
I kinda support that, being able to-
All right, I just need, I just need it to be, I need it to be work through, talk through.
One second, like, I don't even like, there's some places, not necessarily in Norwood, but I swear apartment buildings where there's always a car for sale in the parking lot. And you know, it's, it's just, maybe it's somebody who flips them, whatever, and I, I don't know if even something like that can-
So which way are you going?
I don't, I, I, I would not wanna see a new development, a brand-new development with a, you know, sort of quasi-use car dealership on the corner. Or fishing boats and snowmobiles and all that. I mean, nothing against those items, I just, I think we should be able to control what, what's-
You also have commercial vehicles too.
Yeah, the, the big giant, yeah, the big cube trucks.
Guy's a plumber and he's got a-
Is this commercials, is this commercially zoned? But it's residential? 'Cause residential, you're not supposed to have commercial vehicles parked in your lot.
You can have one.
I've-
Really?
I think we've all seen residential neighborhoods where there's a house where there's a gigantic vehicle parked in the driveway, which is-
So I just know about Rock Street, you cannot park, you can't have a commercial plate on your truck and park around it.
I believe, and I could be wrong, I believe you're allowed one truck.
Okay, I own a unit at Rock Street. You cannot park a car that's got a commercial vehicle plate on it.
That could be the landlord. That could be the landlord of the development.
Doesn't matter, you can, okay. Can each building-
All right, we're not gonna-
No, I think, yes, I think this should be, 'cause it's commercially zoned, can they park, or is it residential rules because it's residential property?
It's, it's a new bylaw, Debbie.
Okay.
It's a whole new bylaw. It's neither.
You get to write the rules.
You get to write the rules. It's a whole new-
Which is why I'm-
It's neither commercial nor residential, it is, it is an overlay district.
Which is why I'm being a little more adamant, because I think that, I get it, you got a trailer, you got a, a vehicle, I'm in, that's what I do for a living. I have commercial trucks all over the place, not at the store, because I can't park them in my lot, I can't park them, I rent spaces, because I can't put my commercial vehicles-
Well, yeah, if, if it's, if it's not your resident, if it's not your residential truck.
So now we've got fifty units, and we've got some people that have, I, I think we should say no. You can't park trailers, large panel vans.
Not without a special permit, right? They can come in and request a special permit.
Or can the landlord of this building just decide what he wants to put there? Or is this us, for us to be able to say?
Well, the bylaw says it's by special permit. Means they have to come to us.
For-
Don't we have a shortage of, or are we just arguing that we have a shortage of parking and now we're worried about twenty commercial vehicles being lined up?
I think we're worried about a place like-
I mean, we, we only get so much parking in these developments, right?
Yeah.
So I don't think it's, we really, I mean, I can't see the future.
I think we're worried about a place like Avalon that has, you know, cube trucks and utility trailers parked in the parking lot.
Okay.
Which is what we're seeking to avoid, landscaping trailers and that sort of thing.
We have to address it one way or another, because it's a listed accessory use in the table, so.
Would it, could it be up for discussion that if we make it a no, could, we could discuss it? Or do you think special permit is the way to go?
If you feel strongly enough against having those types of accessory, that type of accessory parking, you could certainly say no. And if somebody had some sort of crazy extenuating circumstance, they could actually know it's a use, they couldn't request a variance. So, yeah, I mean, if you felt strongly enough about it, you could certainly just say no, it's not allowed for development in this.
So put a star next to that one and we'll hash that out.
Feel strongly enough about it?
All right, so we'll put a star next to it and we'll hash it out.
You want it to be completely no across the board.
On special permit.
I'm undecided at this point.
I'm undecided at, at the moment, I guess, if I had to choose.
I just need to be, I guess my, my whole point of that was, yeah, to, just to clarify what exactly we were doing. So then the next thing I had was-
Also on that point, the Space Center, Overland District, which I know you guys didn't write, but it is on the books, is listed the same way. It's got planning board special permits for those types of accessory parking uses at the Space Center. So if you're looking for consistency with something similar to the Overland District, then the Space Center currently-
The Space Center has got it, I'm just looking at the parking lot, the Space Center though versus what I'm anticipating.
It feels different to me.
It does.
It feels different.
So going back to, not to, going back to parking. What are some of my other concerns here?
Can we carry pick that?
All right, so parking. Location of surface-structured parking is not, is not permitted within the setback between the building and any lot line adjacent to the public right-of-way. So I'm a, I'm gonna assume that would be the front.
Yeah.
And when I talked to Holly today, she explained to me that the, the purpose of this is not to allow residents parking in the front of the building. Correct?
Yeah, so the front of the building is all green space or, depending which sub-district it is, it's the building itself, parking, shielded from-
I like the idea, but I'm gonna be devil's advocate. We're asking for more parking, but we're not allowing them to park in the front of the building.
So it's something that, at a certain point, you have to consider, yeah. If you're asking for a lot more parking, then we need to go back and kind of look at these parcels and figure out where realistically we could go.
Something to think about, just something, something we have to think about.
Can I throw something in on that? I, I agree with you, we're asking for more parking. Parking in the front of the building is kinda like that mess we got down at Shaw's, parked in front of CBS. It's, it just never works if you're parking in front of the building, 'cause most of the time you're backing out into the road. No, you don't, I, I just, I think it's, I, I-
No, I would say you go in a cut, you go in through a curb cut, you pull in and there are parking spaces in front of the building, but if residential parking, you wouldn't be able to park there. According to this.
This is really about, like, the visual.
This is, this is your visual, Debbie. This is your-
This is about having green space in front of the building.
This is footnote twelve in the residential area.
I got it, I, I got it.
So, all right, so this is-
I know, I know I just said we need more parking 'cause people are gonna have cars, but I want it to look green.
You just don't wanna see the cars.
This is, this is something, so this is something we have to mull over. This is, again, we're not voting on anything, we're just mulling it, we're just-
I know we're not voting.
We're just something to think about.
I would like that to be presented at the-
So that, so I understand the reason why, I just, I, I think it does eliminate some parking. The pedestrian entry. The buildings adjacent to the public street shall have multiple pedestrian entries facing the public street. Now, I read that as you gotta have more than one entrance to a building, a main, so if you're on Lennox Street, I'm just using Lennox Street, you're on Broadway or whatever, and you're looking at a building and they have a main entrance with a nice canopy and all that, they need other entrances to the, on the front of the building?
Why?
Why?
Well, you can't just have one entry in and out of the building anyway.
You could do a side to the parking lots where the cars are.
Right, so that's why it's saying the buildings, okay, so it says adjacent to the public street. So we could do the public right-of-way, which could incorporate, if it's a corner lot that has another street.
Corner lot, yeah.
Yeah.
But you could have also an exit, say you have parking in the back, one of your entrances could be going into the rear parking lot as opposed to street-facing.
I mean, obviously you have to have more than one egress out of the building, but if you have a beautiful, nice entrance, entranceway, somebody does it nice with a canopy or whatever, and, you know, Larry's apartment building and all this, and the nice, and, you know, I can see other entrances on the side to get to the parking lot, but why do we need another egress out to the, out to the street?
I'm okay with deleting that. In full disclosure, I am not an architect, I think, like Debbie. I like the idea of including some building design requirements. So a lot of this was taken from like best practices, recommendations from like international organizations for planning and design.
So that, now we get to-
That is kind of like an intellectual concept, but not my idea necessarily.
But could we leave it in?
You could encourage it.
And then say, and then say, eh, you know, we don't need two entryways, you're gonna give us something else. This is a quick pro quo thing, okay? You don't need two entrances, you've got your way of egress, you've got all that, you know, in, out, back door, front door. Can I have some tree boxes?
We could just ask for the tree boxes.
I'd like that even better.
I, I would, I would-
If you don't think this is important, we should just strike it.
I would strike it.
And then if you want more tree boxes, you should ask for them.
Yeah, I would strike, having multiple entrances on the street. All right, so now we're at the, now we're at my, now we're at the big one for me, the bonuses. So the first one, uh, the bonus is that you can exceed the requirements if you do certain things. So the first one would be a how, affordable housing density bonus. You can add one additional story of building height, maybe granted by special permit in exchange for a development that designates at least an additional five percent of total units as affordable units to households making more than the fifty percent average median income.
Okay.
Wait, wait, let me finish Debbie, before you jump in. I, I love the idea, what I would like to see is if, some numbers on how this plays out. So if, just for an example, in my mind here, I'm going through. If you add a hundred units in an apartment building, four stories, twenty-five units, twenty-five one bedrooms on a, on a floor. Twenty percent of those are gonna be at eighty percent AMI. So that's twenty of them, twenty out of the hundred. We give you another twenty-five units. And out of those twenty-five units, does that, and I need to know, does that count? Now we're at a hundred and twenty-five units. Is, do we still, do we take the eighty percent of the hundred and twenty-five? It's still, it's still gonna make it.
So, the total number of affordable units would be twenty-five percent. Twenty percent of the total.
Oh, so we're bumping that to twenty-five percent?
Right, so twenty percent is your base requirement, and including very zoning, which is eighty percent of AMI. That's, that's gonna be consistent no matter what.
But.
The bonus is granted, if you, above and beyond that, you do five percent for households at fifty percent.
Okay, so on a, on a hundred unit complex. And we're gonna give them, let's, let's just go with the assumption you have twenty-five units on four floors. That's a hundred, right? Everybody with me on that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so eighty, twenty of those units are gonna be at eighty percent. We're gonna give you another twenty-five one-bedroom units. What, how many of those twenty-five are gonna be at fifty percent AMI? Five.
So, at a hundred and twenty-five, now you have a total of twenty-five affordable units.
Yeah.
Twenty of them are at eighty, and five of them are at fifty.
Okay, I love the idea, and I love the, I love the fifty percent AMI. My only question on this is.
What's AMI?
Average median income.
Thank you.
Right, no, more than twenty are, uh.
You're giving him a whole floor, you're giving him.
Wait a minute, would, is that a big enough payoff for the? Not for the developer, but for the town?
No.
Is that, is that a big enough payback for the town? Or are we giving, the developer, we're giving them another twenty units at market rate? And it's not all that expensive if you're putting four floors up to put five up. I mean, yes, it's more money, but it's in the big scheme of things.
So if you give them a bonus for parking, you're gonna.
Not, not parking, no, this is, this is, I'm, we're going with what's written, this is.
Okay, but I'm just saying, let's say they wanna do that underground parking to get another level, and then they wanna give you. Now, we, we've added on another level for a possible bonus for getting the parking underground, right?
That's my next question.
And then do they get another floor on top of that?
Well, that's my, that's my next question, so we'll, we're gonna get to that.
I retract what I said, so.
I was.
Yeah, so, so at the one twenty-five units, now you have twenty-five of them at eighty, and you have six of them at five percent.
At fifty percent, rather. An extra fourteen or fifteen market rate units.
Okay, so it, it, it is, plus the, the benefit there, the town counts the entire hundred and twenty-five units.
And there's five, there's, in this example, there's six units that are available to households at fifty percent there.
Just as a, just as a request, when we do present this, that we, we, we show the numbers on, on a. On, on what, what the numbers are gonna be. Because one of the things that came out of the, the community meetings was one affordable. And, uh, so now my next, here's my next one that, that I, and, and, I love you Holly, you, you you did a good job explaining this to me today. This stormwater management bonus. And the, the, the difference in the state law between redevelopment and development is, is, there is a big difference. What we're talking about, almost, almost a hundred percent here, is redevelopment. And Holly can explain it, if you could Holly, for the board and for people listening, the difference between the stormwater laws and redevelopment versus development.
Yeah, so the state stormwater handbook, which is referenced in our zoning bylaw as, following the state stormwater handbook is a requirement. Has, has all different stormwater standards. It has standards for, um, how much water you have to try and infiltrate, how much you detain on your site. It has standards like, you can't increase the peak runoff from a site between the existing conditions and the new proposed conditions. And it has a, a number of different standards. I think there's eleven. Standard seven, um, in the stormwater handbook is for redevelopment. Um, and what the, so redevelopment is when you have, like, an already paved lot, um, and you put something new there. So Windsor Gardens might have some room for new development, because there's a lot of grass there. But Norwood Central and Norwood Depot is entirely redevelopment.
So just, so my question, so, just so you get an idea, you know the big parking lot behind Auto Doctor, that big vacant lot? That would all be redeveloped, even though there's nothing there, it's not new development, it would be redevelopment. Cross Mill Hospital, that big vacant lot.
Yes, 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 yes.
That would all be redevelopment, even though there's nothing there but pavement.
Right, yeah, so, and so right now, there's no stormwater treatment on that parking lot at all, right? Rain hits it, it runs off, it floods the hospital, it goes into Meadow Brook, floods K Street.
Redevelopment.
Right.
No, there's nothing on it.
It's redevelopment.
It's redevelopment, because it's paved, so it's already a impermeable surface.
Prospect Street is new development.
Right, because you're, you're cutting down trees. So we, we like redevelopment, because you're not cutting down trees to do it. But, the, the stormwater standard says that for re, there's all of these standards and all of the standards apply fully to new development. But for redevelopment, it's one of those mushy standards that you really have to push people on, where it says do everything to the maximal extent practicable, and it has to be better than what's there now.
Just try.
Right.
Just try your best.
Haven't we had this discussion on this lot during the hospital? That was a rhetorical question, yes, we have had this discussion on that lot with the hospital.
Yeah.
It's a mess.
Right, so, so at the hospital, you know, the peer reviewer was able to push the hospital to install more stormwater detention than what's there currently, but it was a fight.
Because we can't, we don't have the leverage.
Right, and so what, what this bonus would do, number B, is say, instead of us having to fight you for, to get the stormwater crumbs, you treat your site like it's new development, like you're cutting down the trees to put it in, and so then you have to fully meet all of those stormwater standards. And if you do that, then you, and you do one of these other things, like the, the green roof or the reflective roof or solar panels, then you get that bonus.
Well, the, the green roof would actually help to mitigate the, the stormwater, so it retains some of the water.
You have to do both.
There.
Oh, you have to do both?
You have to do both.
Yeah, but, but Derek is right, that having a green roof is one, one way that a developer could use to fully meet those stormwater standards. Because you can, you can actually have green roofs that hang on to the rain for a little while and then slowly release it over time. Um, and all of those plants are, not that root, usually rain that hits roofs is pretty clean. Um, but plants in general are good at filtering out anything that, that can be in the water.
Come to you and say, I'm gonna put down my rubber roof, and then I'm gonna, I'm gonna put down, um, pallet. A pallet structure, and then I'm gonna put on it, um, boxes. Is that green?
Well, it, there's, there's.
No, I meant.
Is that green to you?
We're gonna be boxes.
What's the box?
Boxes with trees in them, they're gonna be contained.
Between, it's, it's a particular, it's a particular vegetative growth.
I understand that, I'm asking how, is that green?
So, I, yeah, I don't actually have a lot of expertise in, in green roofs, but.
I, I get it, but what do they get it for?
I would say that's a vegetative.
Yeah, if they have trees on top of it, it sounds green to me.
It's as big as this table, you're getting four of them on a hundred.
It says over fifty percent of the roof area.
Oh, okay.
It's not one planter up there, no. But, my, my whole thing on this bonus is. I, I, one, I wanna make sure that we, you're not allowed to have two bonuses. We're not gonna let you go up two stories. I don't believe we should. I think you can pick one bonus or the other. I don't think, I wanna see buildings, you know, say, I got both bonuses. I'm, I'm going up two stories, but that's a discussion we have to have. I would rather see as a bonus, something that is more that, that came out of the comments of the, the public. And one of the things I thought of, uh, this afternoon, after I, I talked to Holly earlier today. One of the things that, that came out of was, uh, housing for, uh, people with disabilities. And, um, one of the, one of the, the things was, uh, obviously affordable housing was a big topic of the comments. But one of the, I would let, rather see a bonus where if you can put an additional building on, or, or story on. Again, it has to meet the height requirement, you know, it's the setbacks and all that. If you would put, make a few first floor apartments ADA compliant. And there's not a lot of that being built in today's markets.
Do they have to go ADD, ADA, just doorwinds?
No, compliant apartments with bathrooms and, and I think there's a, a need for that.
Yes.
And I don't think, you know, build it, put it.
They're building it, they can build the doors bigger, they can build thresholds.
Make five percent of the first floor ADA, I mean, yes, it limits. It limits the tenant, you know, you've, you've shrunken down your mark, your pool. But I think it's, I, I think it came out of the comments, and I think, as much as I love the stormwater management, I think the stormwater management is, is great, I don't, I think that if a guy uses uh, highly reflective materials on seventy-five percent of the roof, I think, and he gets a, he does that and he gets another twenty-five units, I think that's a pretty good deal for the developer. You know, I don't think we'll put, I, you know, I wanna. I'm not trying to be, you know, an idiot, I mean, uh, uh, I don't wanna use the word to, to a developer here, but they gotta feel some pain here.
So.
That we're giving them another, another floor, uh, basically market rate, now some, it won't all be market rate, but a lot of it will be. There's gotta be some, there's gotta be something tangible that, that, that's a benefit. And to me, you know, having something like that, it may not be ADA compliant, it may be something similar. You know, is, is, is a more.
Isn't it just a smart business move to do a couple of units ADA compliant, because they get all kinds of.
I don't know, they don't do it. Very, very few do it.
Look their ROI on that.
So, I mean, I'm just, just throwing it out there. I'm just throwing it out there.
Market that is being neglected.
I wonder if the environmental stuff should just be a design standard that could be written such that the board could grant a waiver for it.
I would, I would be.
If it's impractic, if the, if the developer shows that it's impracticable for some reason. So it's more required, more of a requirement, and then the EDA is a bonus.
What I'm wondering though, is the cost of these things, right? And so this is where, where it's challenging for you all, because you're not developers, right? But we're writing the rules by which they need to play. And so, we don't want to make ev, all of these owners' requirements, and again, make it impossible to build anything, because what we're asking everyone to do is far too expensive, it's unreasonable. I don't know what the cost on like a per-unit basis of making a, a unit ADA compliant versus not is. What if it's not that much more money?
It's not.
I don't imagine it to be that.
Right, so the bonus to do a certain percentage of those units versus making it fully compliant with the stormwater standards. Like, the pain might be more in the stormwater standards and not in whatever.
Again, I just, I'm just.
I feel like that information would be good for us to have.
I'm thinking, like, again, I'm not, I'm not advocating one or the other.
On the ADA, which I think is a fantastic idea.
Is there a use requirement, like, if, let's say they build an entire first floor ADA requirement, that, does that mean that specific population will access those units?
Well, I'm not asking for, I'm not asking for an entire floor, I'm asking for a percentage.
With the intended users, the people that you want to see use it necessarily get the unit, or might people just? They. Yeah.
And then nobody steps up, they'll run it to a reg, to a non-ADA.
I mean, on a macro level, it's increasing the supply.
Yeah.
It's giving more options.
I mean, I, I, I just, I mean, like I said, I, I, I think that one of the things that came out of the public comments was you know, we, we don't wanna make it, we don't wanna give cop launch to the developer here. And, and, and I'm developer friendly. Uh, there's gotta be a little bit of pain, if you want the, you know, we, we gotta get a little bit more back on the bonus. I hundred percent agree on the, on the minimum, on the first one, the AMI fifty percent. You know, eighty percent, let's, we all know eighty percent of AMI in the Boston area is still not affordable for most people. I mean, it's, it's, you know, an affordable unit at Avalon Bay is, for a one-bedroom, the affordable units are like twenty-one hundred dollars. You know, I mean, it's just, you know, it's still stupid. So I love that, the fifty. And then, and then, of course, the, the gathering there is, we get the whole twenty, the whole number of units towards the forty B compliance number as well. But I think the ADA thing came out of a couple of our, our discussions, especially with the Disability Commission and, and, and I thought it was a good idea.
I think, I think the follow-up item that I will do before we meet again is to try to, to get some sense as to relative costs for these things, because I think, I like the idea of requiring the stormwater, but that might be an area, depending on the relative cost, that runs us into trouble with the state. Are we making it impossible to economically construct? Like, for example, the state has already said we can't impose an affordability requirement that's so high that it will result in stagnant or no redevelopment. And the same, I think, would be true for, if we impose really stringent standards for stormwater. So I'm not, I like the idea, but I do think we need to do a little bit more homework.
I think the, uh.
And it's one thing.
I think you will find any, and most contractors, the difference is negligible.
And what?
Uh, putting an ADA compliant apartment in.
Agree with that?
And I'm not talking about the, the sinks that drop down and all of that, which would be nice and all that, but ADA bathrooms, things like that. Yeah, yeah, the wider doorway, sounds like that, it's not.
Let me do a little bit more research.
With that. Mister Chairman, I am done with my concerns.
On that issue, um, it would, it, it's not a requirement, it's a bonus. So I don't think we would run into problems with the state, right?
Sir is saying. Not the way it's written presently, but Holly had suggested making the stormwater standards, a standard requirement across the board for everyone. And not including them as a bonus.
Okay, but the, if we go with the ADA too, that would be a bonus, what he's talking.
Like certain elements of this.
That would be a bonus.
Giving away the green.
Also, there's no rule that says we can only offer so many bonuses. If anybody has any other ideas for incentives that they want to offer bonuses for, I mean, we could have a whole menu of bonuses.
But I think that, and my own opinion is that we cap the bonus at, at one.
Right, so that's an important conversation.
Somebody can't say, I'll do, I'll do two of the bonuses, I'll do the stormwater and I'll do the, uh, five percent at fifty, and, and, and next thing I know, I'm, I'm.
Thirty-two stories.
Yeah, I'm up at the, the presidential tower here.
I gotta, I gotta do it, I gotta do it. We don't want, didn't we just vote at town meeting for any new construction or whatever? No gas? No gas? Nope, we jumped on that.
Stretch codes.
Stretch code, okay. Okay, but we voted on it without discussion, moved the question every time. If we really care about green, I agree with Holly, this should be a, a different one. I'd let them pick and choose some of them, but always giving up rooftop, drainage, parking lot. Right?
Didn't you hear Holly say that we probably trying to make that as part of the?
Right, and
Part of the.
And then Sarah saying we don't wanna make it too onerous, I agree, we don't wanna.
We need to research and figure out.
She needs to research.
This is a follow-up item, we need to figure out what it is exactly, cost-wise, we're asking.
And as far as stretch codes, that would be totally up to the building inspector one and the design, you know, we can't dictate electric or gas or.
Well, yes, if you update your, your electric box, no.
New development, new development, new development.
I'm doing one now, Ernie.
Yeah.
He's gotta put an electric car charger in a ninety-year-old house, 'cause the legislature said if you change your box, that's not a new development.
Right, it's the law, so the building inspector handles that, we don't.
I, I get that.
Okay.
But this is also going to be our law. So, again, I would ask for, I don't, I don't want it to be onerous. I just, nobody's gonna do green unless you ram it down their throats. Even a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for those buckets, not gonna work. So, if we don't ask for, if we ask for forty percent of open space, we're gonna get thirty, 'cause we're gonna give them waivers. Kinda like behind every car deal in Norwood, it used to be twenty, it went down to five, now it's back to thirty. Could we just ask for more and let them close us on a little less?
I think we said, had said yes, in most instances.
I think you should ask for as close to what you want as possible and minimize the need for waivers. The less waivers that applicants have to ask for, the less time we all spend sitting here night after night spinning our wheels, going over long applications and lots of waivers.
It's, the bylaw is twenty percent, right?
Twenty percent for what?
Green space.
Forty.
So I did. Forty is part of that bonus.
It's part of the bonus.
Part of the bon, the bonus, yeah.
But I did tweak the open space numbers.
You gotta remember, right now it's zero on most of those lots.
That's true. It is, it's zero on most of those lots.
I'm gonna be glad when I get, if we can get something in the.
Windsor Gardens is twenty percent?
Yeah.
Open space. I did bump it down to ten on Norwood Central and Norwood Depot, which is something we should talk about.
Just put a star next to those, we'll discuss those.
Why did you do that?
Because it's an increase of what's there.
An increase over what's there, but also again, I was trying to look at each parcel, like, actually on the ground and trying to find that the, the envelope and looking at the percentage.
You gotta come up with a, you gotta come up with a, you gotta be, you have to come up with a, a number.
A working number.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with Debbie, but you gotta, you gotta come up with a number that it makes it fair and reasonable if a gentleman is gonna develop and he's gonna put up a building. And he's gonna, and we're asking for parking, we may ask for a little more parking. And you only have such a big, you only have such a footprint. And right now, the green space is zero. And we're asking them to add green space, ten percent, or we can ask for twenty and, and, you know, or fifteen or whatever. But you, it, there, there's gotta be a happy medium where it, it's feasible for him and yet it's attractive for the time.
I agree, but if we're so close to the bone at ten, and he needs a little wiggle room, we're too close to the bone at ten. So, yeah, every single one has to be, if we're specific, this is what we want, and this particular piece of property doesn't have any place to put green.
Well, there are, so it was written that way to allow you guys the ability to, to grant waivers against these requests. Okay. Which isn't to diminish the importance of the fact that they're requirements, but to your point, yes, every, every property is different and there may be implications.
All right, well, I've said my piece on this, I'm sorry to, to.
Also, women can be developers. Minor correction to your comments.
What did I say?
I didn't touch that one, I left that one alone.
Oh, oh, no.
Developers are mostly he's.
I worked at National Home, but we had a lot of women developers, right, run from Norwood, Karen Carr.
They're just gonna placate you anyway, you know.
Karen, Karen Carr was one of our better customers.
And he's gonna tell you, he's gonna.
Cindy Stumpel puts up his five, six million dollar houses every day.
I think he's looking for a waiver or something.
Nope.
What else you got?
So the next item on the agenda tonight is a discussion of potential zoning amendments for the March special town meeting, which I believe calls for a reading of, and notice, or is this a, no, just a draft thing. Okay.
Now I got.
Yep.
This is the stormwater one?
Thank you. Yeah, so of these potential zoning amendments, the first one, section A is the floodplain overlay district. You just wanna talk in order or list them?
I got a popsicle head agreed this one, I have no questions on this, I couldn't figure it out.
I think.
I said if it's okay with Holly, it's okay with me.
So, maybe not.
Okay. Some interesting illustration stuff.
They got the one that was for the, the ADU.
Sure, although I, absolutely, but I, or.
Is everything that's in red the new?
Yeah, they got the MBT community memo. Okay, so, the, the purpose of updates to the floodplain overlay district in the zoning bylaw is really that the federal and state government are requiring it as part of our membership in the National Flood Insurance Program, NFIP. So, that's a program that's administered by FEMA, and it allows people who are in the hundred-year floodplain next to rivers and other water bodies to access federally subsidized flood insurance that private companies wouldn't sell to them otherwise. So this is, this is essentially the best practices that were identified by FEMA and then told to us by the state floodplain managers at DCR of like, you have to include this to stay eligible for the flood insurance program. So, those are the changes. We've had this ready to go since 2021, which is how long the, how long FEMA has been working on updating the flood insurance rate maps. So we were expecting those to be released in 2021, and they've been delayed. So the latest word from the state is that we're going to get what's called a letter of final determination saying, okay, here's the maps and they're officially official now in December or January upcoming. So, so next month there's. And then, once we get that letter from FEMA, we have six months to adopt the revised floodplain overlay district in order to maintain our eligibility in that program. So essentially, we have to do it either in, in March or in May.
We have, it's gotta go through town meeting.
Yep.
That's how we become compliant.
Yes.
So we don't have a whole lot of discretion of the language.
So there's not a ton of discretion, it has been reviewed by, by the state floodplain manager to make sure that it's compliant with what they want. And he has given it the thumbs up. There's two floodplain managers, a woman and a man. But Eric happened to review ours instead of Joy. And.
Floodplain managers downtown, so Howard Halls, Norwood, where is the floodplain manager?
So there's, there's a floodplain management program for the state.
Okay.
And they are within DCR, the Department of Conservation and Recreation. The town also has to designate a floodplain manager for the town. And the floodplain manager for the town has a couple of jobs. One of those jobs is FEMA has a process where you can request edits to their flood insurance maps. So, say, say you have property that is, you know, had been in a floodplain, but the Beaver Dam downstream has been removed and now it's high and dry. You can write a letter to FEMA and say, hey, like, this isn't floodplain anymore. Can I, can you change your map so that, you know, I'm officially not in the floodplain, I don't have to pay for insurance anymore? And so the, the town floodplain manager is essentially in charge of working with FEMA to make any changes to the maps like that.
Who is that?
Yeah. So currently, it's the building inspector. This bylaw proposes to make the floodplain manager, so this is sort of the one substantive change that's in the bylaw that is worth discussing. Currently, that person is the building inspector. The proposal in this bylaw is to change it from the building inspector to the conservation planner.
That would make more sense to me.
Yeah, 'cause whenever, and so the other thing that, that the floodplain manager has to do is if someone is working within, within a river or within the regulatory floodway of a river, which is the, essentially, so the floodplain is the hundred-year storm, how far it goes? The floodway is the ten-year storm. And that's even more restrictive than, than the floodplain. You're not supposed to really do much of anything in the regulatory floodway.
Navigable or unnavigable? Either?
Uh.
Is there a sign that it becomes?
Pretty much only navigable ones are mapped by FEMA, I think.
A quick question, do we have a lot of flood?
We have a lot of wet.
Yeah, well, let me show you.
We have a lot of flooding in Norwood?
Well, 'cause we have stormwater flooding, and that's actually not in the floodplain overlay district, but I can show on the map.
Bottom of Dean Street, that poor guy.
Yeah, but they don't, they don't have, they don't have to go to FEMA for their insurance, I wouldn't think.
Right, it's, let me, so I can show you.
Yeah, if you can put it up on the screen.
Yep.
Just the orange?
Yeah, so it is, so this is the current, the current FEMA floodplains. The stripey one is that ten-year regulatory floodway. So not every water body even has a mapped regulatory floodway. Some of them do, this is the Nipponset over here on the east side of the airport. The blue is the one-hundred-year floodplain. So, anyone who has a house, for instance, that's inside of a blue area, they would most likely be carrying flood insurance if they have a mortgage especially.
And they can get that through FEMA.
And they can get that through FEMA.
That is, there's three thousand, is that five thousand people that are affected by this? I'm being generous?
I don't know the numbers. One good thing is we don't have too many
Floodplains.
Too many residential properties that are in, in floodplains. So, and then the orange is the five-hundred-year floodplain. So, that's mapped, but it's not regulated by FEMA. So like all of our airport runways you can see are, are in the five-hundred-year floodplain.
It's been four hundred and ninety-eight years since they've had that flood.
So, so this map is the map that will be updated once we get that letter, so it's going to change slightly. So a number of different town officials, including myself, Mark Ryan, the building commissioner, the board of selectmen, have all gotten letters from FEMA saying, here's the new maps, look at the maps. There's a comment period if you wanna protest, like, here's who you write to. And the changes aren't very substantial for Norwood. The biggest changes I saw are actually happening at the airport, where more of our runways are going underwater. But, so, so this is going to change a little bit once we get the new maps. But basically, that overlay district is where you see the, the stripey and the blue on our town map.
So it's gonna cost us anything? Do we need a whole new full-time employee, or can it just go over to, okay?
Yeah, so it doesn't come up that often. The only time I encountered having to interact with this bylaw was when certain teed was having to remove asbestos from the bank of the Nipponset River, and then they wanted to put riprap in the Nipponset River to stabilize the bank afterward, and I, in my capacity as the conservation agent at that time, made sure that they were compliant with this portion of the zoning bylaw, where they had to have an engineer show that the fill that they were proposing to put in the river wasn't going to cause flooding downstream. It wasn't going to cause a rise in water elevations for anyone. So, very unusual that work occurs there.
So it doesn't concern anyone, we don't need it, it should, do we, are we gonna vote to move it over to con, con, conservation? Or is that something you can just do an edict from on high?
It's, it's written in the zoning bylaw, so if the planning board votes to endorse this zoning bylaw to, to town meeting.
Is the space center in the floodplain?
Uh, some of it is, so let me go find the space center here.
I think why is it in the floodplain? Sorry.
Space center floods.
The map always takes a while to load, but.
Well, that's, that's their problem, I don't, don't think you're holding them more than.
Yes, I don't know if it's in the floodplain, but the space center floods.
Yeah, which is one reason why they have that parking on the first floor rather than residential apartments. Do, do, okay, so here's the Cooper Park.
My dad's.
Here's.
Ninety-fifty-five, last this guy.
I believe it.
I told that story, that's right.
Yeah.
If you see a fifty-five Ford down.
So while you're looking, can I just ask, the bulk of this language is essentially boilerplate that's required by
Yeah.
the federal government.
There's not a whole lot of discretion.
There's not a lot of discretion, this is just sort of.
Like Holly said, the, the biggest talking point, I think, for this group is whether or not they feel the conservation planner is a more appropriate in town manager.
Does anybody disagree with that?
Carly Rockland at this point.
I would ask if she, if it's too much to handle, it doesn't sound like we get a lot of things like it, but.
So, all right.
Yeah.
So if that's the real discretionary point, I think.
And she can handle it.
Yeah, and the floodplain overlay district does overlap quite a bit with the Welland Protection Act requirements. There's some minor differences. Yeah, floodplain is regulated by the conservation commissioner.
So as far as the proposed changes, does anybody have any real concerns? It sounds like the real discretionary thing, identifying the conservation. So is it all right to move to the next one, accessory dwelling units?
So this is the space center though, just to show you, I found it. So, yeah, so quite a bit of the space center.
Okay, what was it, fifty-five Dodge?
Fifty-five Ford, it was, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Hurricane of fifty-five.
And you can see where the Nipponset River goes underneath the
Oh, yeah, that, that.
Extra space storage building.
That always used to get flooded.
Yeah.
Even when the, the paint company was down there years ago. They, they used to get flooded all the time.
All right, so, I'm sure either of you enlightened us on the accessory dwelling units proposed zoning change?
Sure. So currently, the zoning bylaw does not provide a mechanism for accessory dwelling units to be constructed in Norwood. Although traditionally, they very much have been a part of the development pattern in Norwood. Lots of families throughout town have, you know, what they know as in-law apartments, or some, you know, smaller residential space that's.
Do they have to be attached or unattached to be defined as?
So in, in this bylaw, no, there's no definition for no requirement that they be attached or detached. It gives a lot of flexibility to allow the homeowner to work with what they've got, so. And I have some experience working with accessory dwelling unit bylaws at my previous municipality. And seeing the creative ways that homeowners kind of came up to add this space. It was kind of across the map, you know, there are additions, finishing off, you know, space within the existing footprint of a home, finishing off the upstairs of a detached garage, or some other existing accessory structure. So this draft bylaw is not prescriptive in that way. What it does is set some safeguards to ensure that the units. What it does is set some safeguards to ensure that the units are safe, um, by providing , uh, means of egress and some independent access, um, but also sets some size standards to make sure that, uh, as an accessory dwelling unit, it truly is accessory, right? It's not approaching that two-family conversion or conversion to a three-family. It's, it's, again, it's a minor accessory unit. And so the size standards that are, um, set forth in this bylaw, um, kind of protect against that, um, which also helps the character of residential neighborhoods. So that's what this is after. It's really not, I think, changing a whole lot of practice in Norwood as much as it is kind of codifying it in the zoning bylaw and making sure that it achieves some of the things that, um, are in the public interest. This is my stab at it, but certainly, there's probably a lot in here to kind of agree with or ask about or disagree with. So this is kind of like your, your starting line, your go-point. But I do recommend incorporating an ADU bylaw of some...
There's no way to address, like, I would imagine that nobody is seeking to allow somebody to build this accessory residential unit to rent out on the commercial market altogether. Is there a way to address use, or is that more like a, is there another enforcement arm that would?
So it's not, I would not recommend that the town, um...
Try to dictate.
...limit or dictate the use of these units to guard against rentals. Some communities do that, um, it's often, doesn't stand up in court if it's ever challenged. It's a monster to enforce. That means your building inspector is out there kind of enforcing who's related to whom. Um, but from a, a most important and, I think, primary perspective, rental income from an accessory unit can be the homeowner's need in the first place. So I'm thinking of a lot of people who are having a hard time aging in place in Norwood because they can't afford the taxes or the cost of living, right? To be able to finish off some small space and rent it might be a source of income that allows that person, that Norwood resident, to stay in their home, um, which I feel is, is a public interest. I think there's...
Have you seen a similar bylaw implemented in any towns in this special town?
Yeah, and actually, um, right now on the governor's desk is a law that would allow these to be constructed by right anyway, anywhere. So the momentum is definitely going in the direction of, um, kind of encouraging municipalities or requiring municipalities to have some sort of parameters like this. Um, I think that will happen, if not soon, it will happen eventually. But yes, they are common.
I, I noticed, uh, the parking, uh, you do have, they have to have a parking spot, correct? And that certainly, uh, Debbie had discussed that before, and certainly that's what, I think that's one of the first things that jumped to my mind if, if you're going to have that, oh, you know, uh, it, it, you're going to have a lot of this going on. The other thing is the size, I think you have it nine-hundred square feet, so that's not conducive to, it, it, probably one person could, you would live in a, an area that they, a small unit. Uh, and the other thing was the, where it's attached, it doesn't have to be attached to the house, but it would be attached to something else, right? Another building?
Not as written, no. But if that were something the planning board felt strongly about, you certainly could.
But...
Other communities have allowed for something like a tiny home to be constructed in the backyard or in garden.
But they tie into the primary residences, sewer, sewer lines and stuff like that? Right? That would be tied through the, not directly to the street?
That's not really a zoning mechanism.
Yeah.
That's not something we typically...
Is this like the thing Dylan unpleasant that was in front of the ZBA the other day? Yesterday, or Thursday?
No, that was a variance request for lot creation.
She wants to make that garage in the back into a rentable unit.
The discussion was whether or not that could have any sort of housing unit at all. So because we have no accessory dwelling unit bylaw, the, the unit that was there in a detached garage was not legal.
Septic? Sure. I have cesspool.
And so the response, her choices then were to take out the housing unit that was in that detached garage, um, or try to find some way to divide the land to create two lots so that that structure could be its own housing unit on its own lot. So that's why I went before the ZBA. But it is true that if there was an accessory dwelling unit bylaw, it's possible that that unit would have qualified, and there wouldn't have needed to be land division.
Okay.
Also, not to pick on that particular homeowner for having a illegal, you know, accessory unit. Like I said, I think it's been longstanding practice in Norwood to have these, but there's just, it's not been addressed by the zoning, so we want to be able to...
All right, and are you doing below grade?
If it meets building code requirements for egress, then the, as written, there's no zoning issue.
Okay.
Obviously, you know, building code requirements still have to...
Same with adequate, yeah.
They still have to...
Yep. And this is, we're still banging away at this?
This is, if, I'm, I'm recommending that the planning board consider, um, sending an ADU bylaw to town meeting. Um, I've given you a draft to kind of start from, so...
Do they have, like, any major suggestions or suggestions or vision?
I agree that we should have a bylaw. I'm not convinced, I need to re, really look at this again. I do have some issues with this. I don't like the idea of being able to build a secondary, even a nine-thousand, nine-hundred square foot building on your property with setbacks as little as ten feet, um, and a building height of fifteen feet, uh, for the purpose of rental. Uh, and, you know, I mean, I understand, uh, I don't even like renting out basements. Uh, but again, if you do a basement with a kitchen and it, they have to have egress, all of that, as a separate unit, separate entrance, that, all that, I understand all that. I understand in-law apartments, I understand people wanting to finish bump, bumpus rooms above garages and things like that, I understand that, and I think the ZBA handles that fairly well. Uh, I, I, I'm kind of hung up on the building of building for rental. If I was a neighbor and you're in a residential lot and, you know, I mean, there's not a lot of lots that can handle that anyway, but, um, you know, I wouldn't be thrilled if...
Are you objections to the detached nature of the structure or the rental use?
Both. But, kind of, right now, kind of both.
Like if you put granny in the ship, would you object to that?
Well, I, I...
No, you're referring.
Yeah, I, I...
Well, they call granny apartments by some people.
Yeah. You know, granny ain't going to be there forever. And, uh, and what happens after, you know...
The grandchildren will be there.
I, I, I don't have, I, I'm just, I, I need to mull this over, I can't give you a decision tonight. I don't like the idea, if I was a neighbor and my neighbor came to me and said, I'm going to put up a nine-hundred square foot building, fifteen foot in height...
Tiny house.
Ten feet, from ten feet to the property line, obviously it's going to have some windows and it's going to be lit up at night and, you know, you have to put utilities in it and I'm going to rent it. Uh, not for granny, but I'm going to rent it because it's not, you can't decide, we don't differentiate that. Uh, I wouldn't like it. And, uh, and so I, I, I got to mull this one over. I, I like the idea of having a bylaw, I'm just not...
The detached part, um, it, a lot of municipalities, so this is kind of based on best practices.
Primarily the detached.
But a lot of, it's not uncommon for municipalities to, um, place a lot of extra requirements on detached. So like, this is all by right, but like a detached would be a special permit.
I think in Vermont...
Or, you know, different setbacks or proximate, you know, it has to be in the backyard or whatever.
I think, uh, Donnie Reddick, if you're listening, uh... Donnie, Donnie, Donnie Reddick tells me all the time, in Vermont, where we used to live, that they, they allow this by right. If you can make your house into a two-family house, they allow it. And, and it is not, you know, there's not a lot of...
Around five acres of...
Regular, no, they're not a five acres, in regulatory zoning. Uh, I just, I, I think we got to have some kind of clarity. I just don't know, the detached especially.
It's, to me, it would be more the...
You're building, you're building an apartment...
If the primary residence wasn't owned or occupied. Like if this was turned into a mechanism for investors to just squeeze money out of properties, that's the, that's the point that would bother me.
Some sort of Airbnb eventuality.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I, I'm just, I'm, I'm glad we're not voting on it tonight, we have time. This is for all my... Excuse me, this is all for the March, uh, town meeting, so I'm, I'm going to mull and we'll have some conversations and...
And if this, you know, if any of these aren't ready for March, then there, there are more town meetings.
Are you saying this is a potential state issue that's coming down the pipe?
ADUs are widely recommended in planning circles as a, a best practice, um, to be able to find some way to incorporate an, a, a response to the housing crisis, right? In a way that fundamentally really doesn't change the character of neighborhoods, right? This isn't two-family conversions, this is a smaller accessory unit, you know, and you can write it in such a way, it's not visible from the street, it has setbacks, it, it minimizes impact on neighbors. So it doesn't change the, the single-family neighborhood considerably, but it gives the homeowner more flexibility on how to use their property. Um, and then, you know, it also just creates a supply of more affordable housing, not deed-restricted affordable housing, but like lowercase a affordable housing. It's a smaller space, it will be more affordable to whomever it is that lives there. And there's, there's a, a public interest there, too.
There is, but it also, there's, with me, is, is, there's a, a place for it, and maybe in single resident zones isn't the place for it. I, the, the attached, I'm, I'm more leaning, I would agree with you more on the attached because I think if someone was going to go to the, the expense of putting an addition on their home for the sole purpose of granny, and, and I can understand that, and they'd be a little less likely to just rent it out versus building a, you know, and, and renting out a studio apartment, basically, to, to somebody for extra income.
Yeah, because I think we have to think down the road, like the parking...
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, well, it would have to...
When the family moves out and the house stays.
Which is why I don't like it either.
I don't, I don't, I just got to mull it over a little bit before.
I just wouldn't want to see a neighborhood change its character because every little ranch in an old nineteen-fifties neighborhood is now owned by, they're like absentee landlord investors that found a way to capitalize on it.
Some municipalities have owner occupancy requirements, that the owner has to reside somewhere on the premises.
Yeah.
But from an enforcement perspective, that is challenging also.
Right, he's chasing, it's, I think you're opening a can of worms, I, I know it was all over the news and, and, you know, it's a big push in Boston and the tiny houses and the this. I, you can call it whatever you want, I didn't move out of the city of Boston, which I love, to live out here in the burbs so I could have people on top of me. I would rather live in the city of Boston, quite frankly. I loved Jamaica Plain, but I wanted a little more space. So why I'm screaming at the dogs and the kids and they're screaming at their dogs and their kids, we're not in each other's space. It's the, it's the garage changeover thing which they're really pushing hard on, and the, you know, sheds, shacks, tiny homes, or whatever you want to call, and they're, and I don't, I don't think it...
Casitas.
And then we're going to do the single-family residence only, and then we've got, I, I just, I don't love it. And you can call it whatever you want, but I'm not living out here in the burbs to be inconvenient, so I would prefer to live in the city. I need a little space, and the more we encroach and give, so, I'm with Ernie, I'd like to, I'd like to cross out some things. I know, this is scary, isn't it?
Wow, that was good, that probably, yeah, that's good.
Mull it over.
All right, so, prefer the discussion, I guess?
I think just to keep momentum going, I would encourage all of you, if you have ideas or specific changes or things...
Articulate specific...
You'd like me to research, you know, we can, we can look things up, we can give you more information, we can give you examples of what other, other communities are doing, and this is true for the MBTA stuff, too. It is helpful in the two weeks between we meet, for you to reach out to us and kind
Just offline, reach out to you directly?
Offline, reach out to us, so that when we come back to the table, you know, we either have tangible things to show you or to address, you know, any concerns you have, or specific changes that you can thumbs up or down, you know, as we go along, but to keep that progress going, that would be helpful.
Do they do anything with lot size? The, the lot size, would that make a difference in these things, whether it was very, it was very small?
You'd have to meet the setbacks.
Yeah.
So maybe for detached in particular, having a, a specific minimum lot size that might be larger than the, the base zoning for that district?
Well, not so much lot size, but what's, what... Well, setbacks is in there, it says ten, ten feet.
Right, so it could be bigger.
It could make it fifteen or...
Um, the, would be how much available, I mean, right now, you can cover... No, you could have a twelve-thousand square foot lot and you got, but eighty percent of it's the house.
Right.
So you only, that leaves you twenty percent of available land.
Like you said, the way that most lots in Norwood are laid out, I think there are probably not too many homes where that would even be something that the, the owner would consider.
Twenty-one hundred bucks a month.
There's a natural limiting factor.
PM me.
Maybe not a foot print of forty feet, you know what I mean?
Was that Connie?
With a small, small footprint. A ten-foot setback, you can stick on your sheds there.
Sheds can be right up to five feet in most places.
Right, but there's nobody living in the shed.
Was an increase to address those concerns.
But sheds don't have the height and, and the size, yeah. All right.
Interesting. All right, so the next potential zoning amendment for the March special town meeting would be, uh, one regarding commercial kennels and residential districts.
The language here hasn't changed from the last time this court talked about it. This was up for discussion in fall of twenty-two.
It kind of was just quietly tabled, I don't remember.
It was something I think that we had discussed in response to an ongoing issue in one of the residential neighborhoods, and, uh, it was recommended to us not to go forward at that particular time, all the work to resolve that.
She got around.
So that was all?
Here we are.
So...
I mean, when you enact new zoning, it doesn't apply retroactively anyway, but at a minimum, I think it's good practice if you see a use that you think is detrimental or incompatible with the zoning, you know, going forward, it's a reasonable...
Is there a demand for this? Is there application? Are there? I mean, it would seem...
To my knowledge, there's at least one in a residential neighborhood that...
Like a private residence inhaling this?
I don't know how many there are.
Way more than one.
Oh, I, I know.
Is there a, is there...
I'm more concerned for the animals than I am, I mean, it, it stinks being their neighbors.
To be honest...
When you've got five puppies in, it, it stinks.
Is there, I'll have to ask Henry, if there's, is there a bylaw, I'll ask you two, you may know, is there any bylaw in Henry's jurisdiction that, that, that says you can only have so many, uh, dogs or cats or...
You can have three dogs.
In one single residence?
One single residence. I had four, got a ticket, okay?
Well, obviously, if you have a litter, you can, you can disperse a...
Well, then there's breeding for commercial purposes.
Yeah, breeding, which a lot of people do, if you want to buy a special breed, a lot of people breed them in their homes.
So there's a limit on the number of dogs?
Debbie says three.
I think it's above three, you have to get a, a kennel permit from the clerk's office, right?
And I think there's a square foot, I mean, this, again, this is thirty years ago, but I had four dogs.
Yeah.
Didn't know, didn't know, and now I'm trying to keep up with Henry, but it is still supposed to be...
So what'd you do with the fourth dog, his home would?
Nothing, kept him.
Remember, you're on TV.
That's all right, they're long dead now, but...
A personal kennel, um, and these are definitions that are now consistent with NGLs. So a personal kennel is a packer collection of more than four dogs, owned or kept under single ownership for private personal use. Commercial breeder kennel is an establishment other than a personal kennel engaged in the business of breeding animals for sale or exchange to wholesalers, brokers, or cut shops in return for consideration. So this makes our bylaw consistent with state law, like we adopt the same definitions that state law has, which is meaningful when you're talking about, I think, applying like health codes.
Can I ask you a question on, on, unrelated but related issue? I'll look at this more carefully. Under, um, doggy daycares... Under doggy daycares, people that wanna take in dogs during the day, like there are some dog walkers that will bring dogs back to their home, is there a, am I missing the, is there a use in the use table on that?
Commercial boarding or training kennel, yes.
This is the driving issue here.
But if they're only there for half a day...
What if, what if, what if you decided to bring in a dog, you say, "Okay, I have, I'm gonna watch five dogs during the course of the day while you go to work."
Right, does that violate, yeah?
Does that violate any law, or bylaw, I should say?
A commercial kennel is an establishment used for boarding, holding, daycare, overnight stays, or training of animals that are not the property of the owner, at which services are rendered in exchange for consideration and in the absence of the owner of any such animal, providing that this doesn't include animal shelters or animal control facilities, pet shops.
And not allowed, right? Not allowed in residential?
Commercial kennels would not be allowed in the single-family residential neighborhood.
Is the driver of this like traffic, or I would think noise, honestly, noise?
Noise, no.
It can be, yeah, owners to be around loud dogs.
The usual kind of environmental impact.
I ran it out, Ms. Homewood, back 30 years ago, she had four dogs.
What?
Dime the road. Dime the road.
I bet he did, didn't even know me and he's diming me out. What does VA mean?
On the chart, serum?
VA is a special...
I did a drive, yeah. Ms. Homewood was training him for their dinner ride.
We were a Brady Bunch with dogs, okay, he had two, I had two, we became a family, we had four.
Ah, that's sweet.
You needed an ADUs for your extra dogs.
What?
You need an accessory dwelling unit for all those extra dogs.
My second dog was a wolf.
They're all gone, they're all, they're all gone.
My second dog was a wolf.
All right, do you have any objections or suggested edits to the kennel?
I do, but I'll call you in.
Oh, and then the notice, the notice one was the last one.
Yeah.
So, right now, we don't provide notice to landowners or abutters if we propose to rezone property. We are not, we are in compliance with state law with our current practice. Town meeting, you know, the warrant is published and posted and advertised, we advertise our hearings in the newspaper and on our website and all that good stuff, but we don't actually mail a butter's notices the same way we do for special permits or other public hearings. We've heard from, from town meeting members and from residents that, you know, there's an interest in receiving some more notice, and I think it makes sense, to the best of our ability, we should try to do that while recognizing that there are times where it's not going to be reasonably possible if we're rezoning, for example, an entire stretch of Route One throughout town.
Or, for example, every floodplain in town, that's a lot of people within 300 feet.
So, right now, the bylaw does have some language about providing notice, but it's very squishy, it's super squishy language, it doesn't define who a party of interest is, it doesn't provide any kind of, it gives us almost unlimited discretion to decide who's important enough to get a notice, which is a trap, I think, you know, for us to try to make that decision without any guidance, you know, or requirement in the bylaw, puts us in a position of being accused of, well, you're trying to engineer this, you provide notice to this person but not that person. So this is an attempt to really provide some clear standards to which we can be held accountable for how we provide notice for zoning changes. It will probably not satisfy everybody, because there is a cap, you know, at a certain point, mailings become cost prohibitive, if you're sending out hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of notices, it adds up. But this does lift the cap slightly, to I think a level that we can reasonably afford and accommodate in our, in our budgets.
What does the $25 mean, I've read it six times, I don't understand.
$25, you can provide like a request once a year.
Who can, everybody?
Any non-resident property owners can file an annual request, prepaying an annual fee of 25 bucks to basically say like, "I want you to send me notice of all of these hearings."
Oh, non-residential, got it.
Yeah.
That's what I, okay.
That's not a change, that's already in the bylaw.
For anything that comes before, or only within a certain...
Notice of such hearings.
So in those, in those cases, a lot of times that would be, people have businesses...
Nobody has requested such a thing, not processed $25 from anyone.
But it would be...
Hopefully, we never did.
It would be some of these people who have a lot of land perhaps and live outside and they're businessmen and they're owners.
Yes, where if you hadn't heard about that, I don't know where you were for those two years.
Well, okay, but this is an answer to that, and I didn't disagree with them, to the Route One, right?
What are you asking?
About notifying people...
That's where this came from, right?
Kind of started. I mean, there's always an interest in people being able to receive more access to information, and it's something that I think we try to strive for constantly anyway.
I think it's a great idea.
More meetings that, you know, like I didn't know about until, you know, five minutes before, what, what?
Yeah, I mean, that's a constant refrain for all of the work we do.
Even when we send people notices.
Even when we send people notices. But, you know, if the question is, what could we reasonably do to get better at it, then, you know, it's worth trying to make a response.
If it required like an adjustment, modernization or some, something to come with the times, that makes sense, I'm a little worried about slippery slope, that somebody's gonna complain somewhere along the line? If it's, if it's not mailed to them, why isn't it not, you know, emailed to them?
That's why, so this is, it is a little bit more clear, because it says affected property and direct abutters, that's a quantifiable thing. It's like how we have to mail notices for special permit public hearings, abutters within 300 feet.
Oh, it makes sense, yeah.
That's quantifiable, you can defend it. The abutter to the abutter will probably still complain that they didn't get noticed, and so that's something that we need to decide as a group, you know, what's reasonable, and that, that's within your right to be able to make that call.
It's pretty straightforward.
But you're right, there's always a slippery slope.
Any abutter, I, the abutter, I like the abutter to the abutter, now.
Can you correct?
I, two things I would like to see possible, one would be if we talk to Norwood community media and possibly when we do have zoning change, public hearings, if we could have Jack put it on the scroll in the government channel, that planning board Monday night discusses Prospect Street or something, you know, to that effect. The other thing is, when someone comes into the office, I think you, when you folks talk to them, you gotta, I mean, kind of, and I know you probably do it already, and they come in, they see the land and they direct them to either one of you or Conservation or whatever, you know, you tell them, "Look, this is," you know, if it's a parcel that's got, you know, 10 houses around it, you know, you gotta notify these 10 houses and you gotta notify the, they're, these 10, these 20 houses, abutters to abutters. Route One's a little different, you know, obviously, but I think you can, the guys can make that call too in the office, I mean, look, you're gonna have to notify these and these people, you know, just, you know, so we don't run into the, that Route One scenario, you know?
I like having standards and rules to follow. I don't, I don't want to have to stand there at town meeting and have somebody accuse, you know, my department of picking and choosing who...
I like a butters to a butter.
I would like town meeting to weigh in on this at your recommendation and say, "This is who we consider an interested party," and if it's a butters of a butters, like fine, a butters of a butters, a butters of butters, like whatever it is that you decide, let's just put it on paper so that we have a standard we can follow. 'Cause the discretion, I think, just sets everybody up to fail.
This is pretty straightforward though, so if there's more than 200 parties, like for example, the BPH was...
Would have exceeded that.
Yeah, exceeded that by a long shot.
By a long shot.
Floodlight overlay will exceed that by a long shot.
So watch the first issue, be those 201 of mine.
Doesn't it need to be noted for fuller play overlay, knows that changing anything about our lives if we're not...
It changes the zoning bylaw.
So the change here is the planning board shall hold public hearing for its own proposed zoning amendments, all public hearing notes shall occur privately, notes, the change email, the planning board's property.
Yeah, but if they've already got the board, they can't come back at them if you overlay it afterwards, well, that's a big, you know...
It affects your ability to sell.
Direct abutters.
I like the idea with the town meeting members, because we had heard from some who said if they had known, they would have...
It's an opportunity to weigh in on that. I, I like the idea.
It's more protecting the planning department and as it goes down the road.
You mean adding the red?
It should be in books.
I like the abutters to the butters.
The bylaw is clear, so that when it's not the seven people, we have no answer.
No, no, that's, that's direct abutter.
'Cause this is why we, yes, and this is where we have a town hall, town employees, all this money, so that those of us that aren't...
Community involvement is important, so to the extent that we can get better.
They can't pick up the phone and call you, know what's going on, I don't think it's a bad thing.
Do you, do you want to see a butters of a butters or just direct a butters?
Can't we do the pin drop? Don't we do the pin drop like we do for zoning?
Where you could do with so many feet of the property.
That's what I was...
That's what I would like.
I would think that.
A pin drop.
300 feet would be a lot.
I'd rather just go with the direct butters.
Like 100 feet I might, would be somewhere within...
Something that would encompass a typical Norwood residential lot, like, which is honestly, what, rarely more than 25 feet across, I'm sorry, 125 feet across?
Well, it's, it's from property back.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a hard, that's a hard thing to say though, 'cause like Westover Properties have been...
Oh, yeah, this is...
They're huge, they're S2s.
What you've got in like my neighborhood or like the general residence neighborhood, where you could easily have 300 feet, including dozens.
300 feet of what?
If it was the radius...
A 300-foot radius, and then you have maybe like manufacturing or commercial properties where you might have one parcel that is acres, and if you have the abutter to that, now that's a mile away.
I mean, I think we're all in agreement that direct abutters should be notified.
Oh, yes, I think it's just too narrow.
Is the butters of a butters too much?
I like, I like the idea of a, sorry, this is your, your bylaw, I like the idea of a certain number of feet more than a butters to a butters, only because of the way that we create our lists, which is by selecting properties and then inputting a butters X number of feet out, whereas if it's a butters to a butters, you have to individually click on each property.
There's more room for error there.
I would like a pin drop and...
It also seems to be a little more organic.
Get a footage thing.
Yeah, you could like, you could be abutting a huge complex, like, you know, something on the one side of Windsor Gardens, for example, you know, you could receive notice of something when they're, you know, effectively a quarter mile away.
Right.
In other neighborhoods, somebody who's literally one house lot away would not receive, or...
Right, and, and the feet isn't meaningless, if you're, if you're 100 feet away, you're 100 feet away.
But I think it's not the pin drop, not the, not the radius, but I think you're, like, what we did, basically what the compromise was on Prospect Street, it was not from the center of the, of the affected property, but from the boundary, like 100 feet from the boundary.
From the boundary, yeah, like a...
From the boundary, that would obviously...
Whatever that encompasses.
Which boundary are you then, you got front boundary or back boundary?
No, all the way around.
The whole boundary.
To zoning change, so it's like the whole...
Just like we did at Prospect Street.
Yeah.
Right, so how was that in a pin drop?
Well, a pin drop would be a center and then a 300 feet out and you draw a circle.
And it could be, there's nobody, even though there's a butters there.
We did it on Prospect Street.
All right, but you gotta give them, I think the bylaw has to have a specific amount of feet.
We just said that, 100 feet.
I would recommend 100.
From the boundary line of the affected property.
Okay.
And that's, that's how our software works naturally.
So if this is the property, it's 100 feet here, it's 100 feet here, it's 100 feet from here, it's 100 feet from there.
Is that a strategy that a lot of municipalities employ, you guys have seen some stuff?
And I guess you guys gotta mull it over if it would work for you guys.
I will say, this is, this is going above and beyond, I actually haven't found too many bylaws that include notice for zoning amendments that exceed the state requirements.
To be honest, the, the issue that came up, you know, here recently, I don't, depending on how many feet it is, what is it, 100 or 200, you say, it wouldn't have included a lot of the people that were upset about that.
Well, you're never gonna catch them all.
You're never gonna catch them all, well, and that's the, that's in here.
Would 100 feet from the boundary line work for you guys?
Yes, so this is a random...
Think about it, you don't have to decide to make...
Yeah, look at that.
A random property that I selected and we put 100 feet away, so it's capturing one parcel behind and in front, and three on this side and two on that side.
Yeah, that works, and across the street, it catches a couple.
Yep.
Yeah, 100 feet from the boundary line, starting at the boundary line.
Yes.
That's what I said.
Whatever you catch, even if you catch a...
I'm just saying, from, from being unambiguous.
So the board seems to be in agreement of that strategy?
Be comfortable with the 200 max that counts?
Yes, yes. Let's not get hoopy here. And just so we're clear on a, on...
If you're dropping it northwest Windsor, Windsor Garden.
Sarah, just so we're clear on, like, say, South Norwood, for example, where there's a three-decker, it's, it's the owner, not everyone, not every renter gets, gets notice, the owner of the building gets the notice.
Great, so I think we're all in agreement on that.
And that's their responsibility then?
Perfect, great, fine. So the only, the remaining agenda item is other business, does the board have other business?
Do you have other business? I don't have other business.
Excellent.
We got a lot to think about.
A lot, yeah, there's a lot of, a lot of feedback, so with that, does anybody have a motion to adjourn?